Everyone is present, we do have a quorum. We're gonna stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance and we're gonna follow up with an invocation if you wish to remain standing.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
The invocation tonight's gonna be delivered by Dr. Jim Wallace.
Would you pray with me? Lord our God, we come to you tonight in troubled times. A time of wars, a time of division, a time of harsh rhetoric, and a time that divides families and neighbors and friends. I thank you for the leaders of our city, Shenandoah, Texas, that lead in such a way as to bring peace to where we live. Leaders who get along and work together in spite of any differences they may have. Leaders who are not afraid to compromise and find solutions that benefit everyone and not just one side. Leaders who speak and lead with kindness and grace and respect. Bless our leaders. Tonight and every day as they work and serve us, make them fruitful and successful. Help us to support and encourage them that their jobs would be made easier and more fulfilling. Bless them with wisdom, foresight, and compassion. And protect the streets and homes of our town. Thank you for our police service who helps make that possible. Bless and protect them. We pray this in your holy name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to item number five, citizens forum. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on matters related to city government that relate to agenda or non-agenda items. Speakers are asked to stand up and approach the podium to address counsel and give their name before sharing their comments. First off, we have Mr. Brian Crist. Mr. Crist.
Mayor, members of the council, visitors, my name is Brian Crist and I am the chairman of the Republican Party. I am also a candidate for reelection and that is why I'm here this evening, asking individually for each and every one of your vote when I appear on the March 4th ballot. As you may have heard, there is strife in the party and the strife largely revolves around what our forefathers called the doctrine of the lesser magistrate. Today, we call it standing in the gap. You see, at state convention eighteen months ago, a rule was adopted that purported to allow the county chair to keep someone off the ballot if they so deemed them not Republican enough outside of the qualifications that the Texas election code clearly spells out. I will not be that person. I absolutely will not be that person and I've been standing in the gap against that. In fact, I knew this rule was gonna be abused because they were gonna manufacture reasons to keep people off the ballot and I've seen it happen. But that's only the first step. Folks that at the top of the party to the bottom of the party that are advocating for this are seeking to abolish the primary. In other words, they wanna go back to the way it was a hundred years ago in smoke-filled rooms at convention when party bosses and fat cats nominated who you get to vote for. I think that is unpatriotic. I don't believe that my fellow congregant, family member, neighbor should be deprived of their vote. All of this is well documented and it is the reason my fight, I have been dragged before the Texas Supreme Court and those that oppose me have tried to force and coerce their way using the court. Thankfully, I prevailed in that court case, but I assure you, they will not relent. Neither will I. So again, I ask for each and every one of you in this room, elected official, individual, to support me on the ballot in March 4th for the chairman spot of the Republican Party. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Next to speak is Minister Tyrone Price.
Good evening, I have a lot to say and a little time to say it in, so I'll be very quick. First, I'd like to say that providing public water and sewer to the historic community of Tamina using the ARPA funds provided by Montgomery County, Texas, is excellent and long overdue for the community. However, it should not come at the expense of replacing and the existing residents, future residents, in the key areas to build affordable homes for future residents moving into the area. After listening to the last city council meeting, we have reason to believe that the city of Shenandoah does not see the historic Tamina community in the future comprehensive plan. It is in the executive session, the developers agreement did not give developer DC business the option of historical single-family residential. Instead, according to the records of the city council meeting, they were provided zoning options for retail, commercial, office, commercial, light industrial, and moderate industrial for all DC business properties annexing into the city of Shenandoah. The city of Shenandoah agreed to approve such zoning within sixty days of the application of September 27, 2023. So my question is, why wasn't the historic, single-family residential not an option for DC business? Also, can you show us where the city of Shenandoah included and communicated with the Tamina community leadership and residents prior to this development decision and in the ETJ of Tamina? What we've heard in the past interviews, that podcasts, well as recent meetings with mayor, yourself, and other city council members that you wanted to keep Tamina as Tamina and even with the fact of bringing key resources to Tamina, it will increase the morale of the area in the ETJ. The city's most recent actions have shown inconsistencies in what has been the state that was been stated to the Tamina community leadership and residents. So what's extremely disappointing is it appears that the city of Shenandoah used the lack of certain public services, the conditions of the historic Tamina community, to obtain ARPA funds as well as a steering committee that may have not been part of the city of Shenandoah at the time that directed the Old Tamina Water Supply nonprofit to sell their CCN as an avenue to obtain developer options for commercial business growth. I question should, in this case, should the federal government audit such action before the historic Tamina community is no longer in existence and the residents are replaced by business and revenue gains for the city? I'm certain that the federal government did not intend for the ARPA funds to be used in a manner for developmental gain. And we want to restore the beauty of our community with the ARPA funding from the federal government and MDD funds from Montgomery County as well as other sources of funding that our property taxes have paid in past decades. So that is my concern tonight. I really wanted to express that because I've heard in the past meeting of the city council meeting and also at the PMZ meeting that I wasn't able to attend certain things that were addressed at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next to speak, Mr. Charlie Ballmer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of quick things. First, I wanted to say a huge thank you to the Shenandoah Police Department for an exceptional night out. It was an amazing success based on just the pictures that I had and some that I shared with other folks that live in the surrounding area. They were totally floored by how many people and how many activities we had going on. And I heard this comment from two different people in different scenarios. They said, "Look at all the smiles on the police officers' faces that were just, you know, just in random, nonposed pictures," which was really cool and it kinda made me proud to be here. Second is, I went to my first planning and zoning meeting last week. It was, I don't call these earphones, see anybody else, but that was a really awesome experience. I'd never been to one, as I said. Tons of great information. They present a lot of the things that are going on around our neighborhood. You know, we hear bits of it that come out in the council meetings, but that was like, you know, being in the room with people talking about it. So it was very enlightening and definitely something I'll be attending in the future. And finally, I just wanted to share just in general that trick-or-treating, which is separate from the other stuff that we'll talk about later in the Fall of Fun Festival, is still an event on October 31st in the evening here in Shenandoah. For anybody that's on social media, I did put a post out, the last couple of years I've posted a map for everybody that shared their address with me that would be doing Hannyot candy for the trick-or-treaters. So I am doing that again. We already have over forty people that have signed up. So even though it might be a little chilly and potentially a little rainy, if you put on your galoshes and hopefully a waterproof costume, definitely come visit the homes that'll be out there. And of course, leave your lights on if you've got candy and if you run out of candy, turn your light off. But I'll be posting that on Monday and I'll repost it on Tuesday next week on social media for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie, growing up in Wisconsin, most of the years you didn't get to show off your costume because you had to wear a winter coat.
All right, we're gonna move on to item number six.
Give that one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Mr. Levinson, James Levinson. My apologies, Mr. Levinson.
My name is James Levinson, I'm from the Tamina community. And Minister Tyrone has covered some of the things that I wanted to say, but I did wanna ask the council about the grant money that was allocated for Tamina. I know we didn't apply for it. I wondered who applied for this grant for Tamina. We had questioned, I don't know if it was State Representative Steve Tote or who, but we talked to Judge Kehoe and we talked to Millsap and all of them was telling us that this money had to, our municipality had to use the money. Well, we need this, but I was under the impression that Tamina was classified as a low-income, slummed, and blighted area when I talked to State Representative Tote and that this money was to alleviate those conditions, some of those conditions in Tamina. But it seemed to me that this project is gonna ensure that there be no Tamina because our taxes already is going up so high that people are not gonna be able to pay them. Plus, we adding a new bill or financial obligation on the people that pay for the sewage. And I don't see what this is doing our, I know we getting sewage and most people put in water and sewage, we have good water system. I mean, the infrastructure need some work, but we have water. It's basically just sewage. And it seem like the way things are going now, that it won't be a Tamina. Like, I was talking to Minister Tyrone and they were saying that, yeah, they said they gonna put Tamina on the water tower, but that ain't nothing but paint, we can paint that off anytime we get ready. The only thing that Tamina had was a water company and we had to get rid of our water company. We had dropped our season this year, we agreed dual certification for Shenandoah to operate in the community. We did everything in good faith and we did everything to get it in here, but it seem like that we get it in here, it's gonna drive us out of here because our taxes are going up so high, we can't pay them. And then we adding the cost of paying for sewage service and it seem like our, well, it's gonna grow because the developers in the city are gonna prosper from it, but I don't see where it's doing the community any good at all. Because we can live off a septic tank. We've been doing it for all these years, but we realize we need the sewage system. And that's why we made so many concessions to get it, but I don't see what we getting in return really. Because it's putting really more obligation on us because we got another bill that we have to pay and we already consider low-income, slummed, and blighted areas and we add more expenses to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Levinson, if you're willing, we can address your initial concern as to who applied after this meeting. We can't address your concern.
Yes, I understand. Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, we're gonna move on to item number six. Presentation by Dr. Curtis Knoll, CISD Superintendent of Schools.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. I appreciate this chance to be before you, share information about the Conroy ISD bond referendum that'll be on the November ballot. I know for a few of you, you've seen this already, maybe a couple of times, so I will do my very best to help walk you through this. I also wanna mention just to everyone in the audience, we have some handouts here available as well, so if you'd like to have one, maybe somebody could help me pass them out. Thanks, I appreciate you.
Same one I got at the football game last week.
Indeed, absolutely, yes, sir. Well, let's, we'll hit some quick information about the school district and then we'll move on into the bond. Conroy ISD is a large school district in the state of Texas. We are the ninth largest school district out of the twelve-hundred-plus school districts in the state of Texas, rapidly approaching seventy-three thousand students. We grow an average of fifty to one hundred students per day, and so we will continue to grow. Like I said, we're currently the ninth largest. We will be the seventh largest school district in the state of Texas, but then either this year or next year, we will pass Fort Worth and Austin on that list of largest school districts. In addition to being large with the number of students, we're also large geographically with the largest geographic school district in the Houston area at three hundred and forty-eight square miles. You can see on the map how we stretch across the county. In fact, there are five other school districts in Montgomery County that fill in the rest of the portions of that map, and if you add all of their student populations together, they still have fifteen thousand less students than we have in Conroy ISD. In addition to that, we are the largest employer in Montgomery County by far. We have nine thousand employees. The second-largest employer is right here in your backyard, Memorial Hermann Hospital. They have about three thousand employees. So we are three times larger than the second-largest employer in the county. We do have great success in Conroy ISD and it's for one reason. We have great teachers in Conroy ISD. And as a community, this is a place that people want to live, wanna work, wanna raise a family, and that helps us to be able to attract and retain the very best teachers. We've been named by Forbes as one of the best employers in the state of Texas and we were named by Niche.com as the best place to teach in Montgomery County as well. And when you can attract and retain the very best teachers, you can win the other awards that you see on this slide, namely, best school district in Montgomery County, the most diverse school district in Montgomery County, and the best place for student athletes as well. So we're very proud of the work of our teachers and the great students in Conroy ISD. We don't always have great news to share about taxes, but we do this year, so I'm proud to share this slide with you. The legislature worked hard over the summer to give what they called tax rate or property tax relief. We see it as tax rate compression in Conroy ISD. What that means is they use the surplus that they had in the budget in Austin to allow us to lower our tax rate here locally on homeowners and we get to enjoy that lower tax rate. At the same time, our funding stays exactly the same. So our funding does not change from last year to this year, but we are lowering our tax rate by fifteen cents. You combine that with the new homestead exemption going from forty thousand to sixty thousand and you see real savings on tax bills this year. Some of you may have already received your tax bill in the mail. If not, it should be coming in the next few days. I haven't seen mine yet. But if you own a five-hundred-thousand-dollar home, your tax bill in Conroy ISD will decrease this year by one thousand two hundred and eighty dollars compared to what your tax bill was last year. So that's real savings for us as homeowners and I know we appreciate that. Growth is something that we see, we all feel it in our area. We are now growing at a rate of about three thousand students per year in Conroy ISD. We have historically grown at about fifteen hundred students per year, so we've now doubled that rate. We've done that over the last two years. Because of this new increased growth, we did perform a demographic study and that demographic study, the highlight point I'll give you is they told us that that three thousand students per year is our new normal. That is what we will continue to see for at least the next ten years. They won't project further than ten years out, so we know for the next ten years, we're gonna be expecting three thousand or so new students per year, which means we're about nine years away from crossing over a hundred thousand students here in Conroy ISD. Based on that rate of growth and the fact that our schools are already over capacity, the school board asked us to put together a bond planning committee. This is a group of one hundred and forty-eight citizens that came together to analyze the needs of the school district. We had representatives from all across Conroy ISD, every geographical region represented. We had parents, we had teachers, we had business owners, business leaders, we had folks that are taxpayers and had no other affiliation to the school district other than they were taxpayers. They are the group that worked to put together the bond proposal that I will share with you tonight that the voters will see on the ballot in November. So let me give the highlights here. On this first slide, what I'll point out to you is you will see four propositions when you go to the polls and perhaps you've already gone, as early voting is already open, but you will see four propositions for Conroy ISD. You'll be asked to say yes or no four different times. There is no all-inclusive button. You have to answer four times for Conroy ISD. That was done intentionally by the bond planning committee. They wanted to give voters choice. They wanted to separate out items that they felt could be controversial or folks may have concerns with. They wanted to have those separate from new schools and that's why you see these four propositions. And I will highlight for you tonight, each of the four propositions. I'm gonna focus tonight exclusively on the College Park feeder zone because that is where students in Shenandoah track through the College Park feeder. So that's gonna be what I'll highlight tonight. And so what you'll see, when you see the CP logo, that'll indicate to you that this is an item that hits the city of Shenandoah. Proposition A is the largest proposition, makes up a majority of the money that's included in this bond. It starts with eight new schools. Now, here in the city or in the College Park feeder, there are no new schools included in this section, but there are a lot of pieces of Proposition A that do impact the city of Shenandoah and College Park feeder. And that starts with our additions. So we will have additions in Haley Elementary, which is in the College Park feeder, but beyond that, we have major renovation at Knox Junior High. So that is the junior high for all of your students and they'll have a major renovation there. Moving on down into Proposition A, you see infrastructure and you'll note on your handout that you see, every school is listed on this, the side where you see the College Park logo under infrastructure. Infrastructure addresses critical mechanical needs of a building, so things like air conditioners, roofs, electrical systems, those types of things. So you can see that your high school and your intermediate school and your elementary school are all included in infrastructure work that would be done as part of Proposition A. Additionally, in Proposition A, there is money for safety improvements that would impact every single campus in Conroy ISD. Technology infrastructure, which is everything from the router back that makes technology work, IDF, MDF, servers, all of those things, impacts every campus. And then money for transportation, for new buses as well as expansion of our current facilities so that we can park and work on more buses. So all of those things together make up Proposition A. It's the first piece that you will see on the ballot. Proposition B is for technology devices. This is for the laptops, tablets, computers that teachers and students use. You may ask, why is this on a separate proposition? If you have technology infrastructure in A, why didn't you put these devices in A? It's because state law requires that technology devices be in their own proposition. I'm not sure why that is, but we follow the rules, so it's its own proposition. It's also a good time to make the point here that our standard bonds are twenty-five years in length, but when we finance anything that does not have a twenty-five-year life expectancy, we pay off that item within the life expectancy of the item. So all technology devices are paid off within three to five years. Buses, even though we tend to drive them closer to twenty years, we pay them off within ten years. Proposition C is for elementary gyms as well as ag barns. So we have an ag barn here down in Booty Road that serves College Park and the Woodlands. This would be a renovation and expansion of that ag barn for students here in your city. And then additionally, we would have gyms for elementary schools that don't have gyms. La Mar does have a gym. It's one of the few elementaries in the College Park feeder that actually does have a gym, but this would be building gyms at the sixteen elementaries across Conroy ISD that do not currently have a gym on their campus. All of our new elementaries are built with a gym. And then finally, D, maybe the most impactful piece, truthfully, for the city of Shenandoah because this is to be built in your backyard, would be an additional pool to be located at our auditorium at Woodford Spanx Stadium. So our Wilkinson Auditorium is our only pool facility in Conroy ISD. Most school districts have a pool at each of their high schools. We do not. We just have the one pool. In addition to potentially adding another high school, we have now added water polo as an official sport, so we have an additional sport running out of that pool. So this would build an outdoor pool directly adjacent to the current auditorium. It would be a covered pool, a year-round covered pool, but outdoor. It would also expand the locker room and restroom facilities of the current auditorium. So it would expand their ability to not only host practices but also to host bigger events in, you know, on the weekends and throughout the summer. So we circle back, once again, it's four propositions. You vote on each of them separately, they stay in alone. Potential impact, once again, if we stay at the five-hundred-thousand-dollar house value, it's about eighty dollars per year is the tax impact on a homeowner of this bond. That's if all four pass. And actually, the two-cent tax impact for this bond is generated by Proposition A only. So because of the amount of money in A and the speed in which those bonds would need to be sold to start construction on new schools, Proposition A is the driver of the tax rate. So B, C, and D do not impact the tax rate at all. So if A passes, it's two cents. If A, B, C, and D pass, it's still two cents. A is the driver of that tax rate. Just a comparison here of a per capita look at bond costs. Once again, we talked at the beginning how we're surrounded by smaller districts where we do like to benchmark ourselves to see how do our numbers compare to our neighbors. I won't highlight all of these, I'll just point out New Caney since it was the most recent bond election. They had a successful bond election in May, so just six months ago, six hundred and ninety-five million dollars. They have about seventeen thousand students in their school, so forty thousand, six hundred dollars per student. That would be the equivalent of Conroy ISD seeking a two-point-nine-eight-billion-dollar or three-billion-dollar bond. You can see us there at the bottom, how we stack up at one-point-nine-nine-five, which is the total of all four propositions. I would also highlight this, the column on the right that shows that we are the lowest tax rate of all of the school districts listed there and would be even with the two-cent tax increase, maybe with the exception of Magnolia. I'm not sure if they'll have to increase theirs due to the passage of their recent bond or not, but we would still be certainly one of the lowest on the chart. So just to circle back to the slide we saw a few minutes ago, what is that tax rate impact and how does it look? Fifteen cent decrease this year, your tax bill goes down one thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. That's locked in for this year. That tax rate is already locked in. If the bond is successful in November, be the potential of a maximum two-cent tax increase for next year. So that would cause your tax bill to go up eighty dollars, so you would be at a net one thousand two hundred dollar decrease for next year's tax bill compared to last year's tax bill, assuming they were all successful. Just a few of our frequently asked questions, we've answered a couple of them already, but one of the more common ones is, how much money is included in the bond for teacher salaries or to hire more police officers? The answer to that is zero. You cannot use bond funds for personnel costs, you can only use bond funds for capital expenditures. So there is no money included for teacher raises in this package. Early voting is underway. This week, it is eight to five. I would just highlight to everybody that this upcoming Saturday is the only weekend day for early voting. So if you need to get out on a Saturday, this Saturday is the only one, eight to five. And then next week, we do have extended hours, seven to seven, Monday through Friday of next week. And then Election Day is the following Tuesday on November 7th. It is a day that we are out of school, so if you have schoolchildren, our teachers are working, but our kids are not on campus, so we try to keep elections off our campuses when we, kids and elections from mixing on our campuses when it's possible, just for our campuses when it's possible, just for safety. So kids will be off. But if you want any information about the bond, everything I've shared, everything that the bond planning committee saw is on our website. It was put on our website in real time. We wanted that process to be the most transparent process it could be. So you can see every presentation, every piece of data that they saw. You can go back and see all that, as well as any information shared. All of these handouts are included on the website as well. I appreciate the opportunity to share and happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Counsel?
So I guess I do have a couple of questions. So if all the bonds are passed, does this refinance any existing bonds?
It does not.
So this is a whole new bond for 1.995?
Yes, sir.
So weren't we here four years ago asking for 1.2 or 1.4 billion?
No, four years ago, our bond was 654 million. The initial bond was 807, was not successful. We came back at 654.
And so now we're back asking for 1.9?
Yeah. In 2019, the bond need was about 1.6 billion. And the committee came forward at 807, and then eventually it was 654. This year, the need that the committee saw started at about 3 billion, and then they brought it down to 1.9. We anticipate this to be a four-year bond program.
Why is the need so great? It's not all based on growth. I mean, if we look at this, the budget has gone up as well, has it not?
Yes.
Significantly. I mean, in a four-year period of time, it's almost doubled.
Yeah, our budget's based on student enrollment. So we're funded from the state based on a per-student basis.
But it's also funded through taxpayer, taxpayers. I mean, we pay through our property taxes.
Correct. So we all pay through property taxes, but the money that we receive is based on our student enrollment. So if our student enrollment drops, we get less money, the state takes more money.
So, and if I remember right from four years ago, that I think at that time, and I could be off, so you'll have to correct me here, you know? I think you'd mentioned that 83% of the budget went to pay for salaries?
Eighty-nine percent.
Eighty-nine percent?
Yes, sir.
How is that sustainable?
That is, that's the model. That is, that's common across the state of Texas. That's the way we're funded. So the state funds us.
That's why we have such extraordinary bond requests.
Yeah, because the way the funding formula works for schools in the state of Texas is we are funded operationally through property tax. So that is to pay for salary, and that's what covers that. The construction and capital cost, the state of Texas does not fund us for that. They expect us to sell bonds to cover.
But operations and maintenance would still have to come out of that 11%, and that's not sustainable.
Correct. So we perform maintenance.
That's why we end up having 40 million in technology devices and some of this other stuff. I just have to question the school board on some of these things. I mean, honestly, we're showing 9,000 employees. How many of those are teachers?
About 5,000.
So with 9,000 employees, that's one employee for every eight students.
Indeed, yes.
And 5,000 of those would be teachers?
Yeah, about 5,000 are teachers.
More than half of that is support staff?
Yeah, that would be counselors, administrators, cafeteria workers, custodians, bus drivers, all of the people that make the school district function.
And I think it's great that taxes are coming down, you know, 15 cents, but I don't see that's how the school board did that for us by any means. Obviously, that was, state government did that. What concerns me is moving forward, we're going to be back in this same position in less than four years.
Yeah, I anticipate that we'll be back in four years, yes, sir.
Asking for probably the same amount.
Yeah, potentially.
And I know that's not your.
Absolutely.
It's not your fault.
Potentially, that's true. You know, now we're back today where we were, where we can't, we're back today at exactly the same tax rate we were at four years ago when I stood here. So we're 26 cents on our bond in that side, which is one of the very lowest in the Houston area. And we continue to be the lowest tax rate. So we have options. There are options that we have as a school district. We can raise our tax rate and fund more of these things annually. We could do that. That's a choice that we can all make as a community. Our board has historically taken the approach of maintain the very lowest tax rate as possible and manage our debt to the best of our ability. That's typically been their approach.
So is any portion of this bond being used to pay the tax rate down?
No. We're not allowed to do that anymore. We used to use a portion of our M&amp;O side to buy down our tax rate on the INS. The state took that ability away from us a few years ago.
Troublesome to me. Again, it's not your doing by any means, but.
We actually outspend the state average on maintenance costs fairly significantly. So it's, I understand your consternation with the way the state funding formula operates. I get that, but that is, it is the way the state funding, you know, we're not funded like a municipality. It's a very different funding situation. We don't get to just bring in our tax dollars and choose how we spend them. Our tax dollars come in, but then the state takes control of them, and then they issue them back to us as school districts. It's the way it works, so.
Is there any legislation that we could help you with at all to improve that?
Well, they have $4 billion right now in Austin that has been already allocated for schools, but it has just not been distributed as they continue to debate all the things that they're debating. That $4 billion is sitting there that would help us with salaries. Our employees are working today for the exact same salary they worked for last year. We did not give a raise this year because we did not receive any additional funding. So our budget is higher this year than it was last year because we've added 3,000 students, and we are funded per capita. So we have more money this year because we have more students, but it just translates directly into employees. So there was no raise given to any of our employees. We're hopeful that that legislation will come through and will allow us to give a raise to our employees. The most significant legislation as far as, you know, has been the tax rate compression. You know, it does help, it helps all of us as homeowners when we lower our tax rate. So that's been, that's been a great thing.
So the bond B for the technological devices, since those are short-term, how long is that bond?
Three years. We paid off in three years.
A three-year bond?
Yeah, we'll pay that principal off in three years.
And what happens, all those devices, at the end of three years, are just out of date?
Yeah, we'll use them as long as we can, you know, but there is a point where they run, and so the state now is requiring us, all of our state testing has to be done on computers. So there's no longer Scantron bubble sheets like we all used to be, used to. It's all, it's all computer-based now. So what, the biggest thing that runs, that kills a computer is once they age to a point where you can't update them anymore to run on the state's system, that's, that's when they, they fall off. So that's, besides wear and tear, just operationally, that's really the point where you, when you can't update them anymore, they die. And then we sell them, we surplus them, but you know, they're not worth anything to us. They're not worth anybody else at that point, truthfully.
Other than the materials and stuff.
Correct, yes, sir.
So with the governor calling back special session and here passing school choice, if you would, do you think that's going to have any impact in driving down enrollment and affecting the costs that would normally come into CISD?
Yeah, I don't see a major impact. You know, if you look at Senator Creighton's bill, it's in the Senate, it's the most aggressive one that's even out there. It's 65,000 students. There are 5.5 million public education students in the state of Texas, so 65,000 represents about 1.8%. So if you just take that 1.8% and apply it to Conroe ISD, it's about 700 or 800 kids. So if you look at us and you say we're going to lose 800 kids as a part of this, if we grow at 3,000 and we lose 800, we still grew at 2,200. Now, there are eight new schools in this package, and we don't build schools because they're voter-approved. We build schools when the attendance triggers their need. So if growth were to slow down, be it through vouchers or any other means, if just the economy changed, then we didn't need those schools, we would slow down. If we never needed it, we wouldn't build it at all. The first four schools that are scheduled to be built are for campuses that are presently today significantly over enrollment. So even if another student didn't move in, those first, those first four would be triggered immediately. But the ones further down the road, they could be slowed, they could slow down. We've done that in our history. We had a bond, I believe, in 2010 when we saw the economic downturn right after that. And that bond was scheduled to be a four-year bond. It ended up stretching into a seven-year bond. That could happen again.
You say your model is 25 years?
Yeah, our bonds are 25 years, correct. Some districts go out 35 or 40. We do not. We stay at 25. It's our longest.
Any more questions, Dr. Knowles?
So are they planning far enough ahead as they're building these schools to be able to build up in the future?
So all of our schools are multi-story schools already. So when we build a school, our elementaries, we build big schools already. It's our, that is just our model. It's the most economical way to build a school. So we build an elementary at 950 students. Most districts will build an elementary to about 650. We build 950. Our elementaries are two stories. Our junior highs are built at about 1,500. They're all two-story. Our high schools, in this package, there's a high school that's 3,800 students. It's three stories. So you, there are times when you can add on to a campus. There are also times when you can have too many people in one place. The infrastructure around a building won't support it, the roads, the traffic. You just can't add more people to that site. And then you also just play into what's the, what's the future of that building? So for example, Haley, which is included in this package, is getting an addition as part of Proposition A. It is in addition to that school because that will hold the capacity that it needs to not, need to trigger another school in the future. But right down the road from us here, we have Suchma Elementary that has 22 portable buildings today, and they're anticipated to grow by another thousand students in the next five years. So adding on there would not, would not work. It would be another school triggered from that place. So it's, it's based on what the future need would be in that area.
Any more questions? Thank you, Dr. Knowles.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Let him move on to item number seven, presentation of the monthly capital project report.
Okay, MDD did not meet last month, and no action was passed this evening. Quick highlights, David Memorial, Tamina Intersection Improvements. That design is targeted for completion at the end of this month. Instruction to begin in 2024. David Memorial, the prep work for bridge footers is in progress, and additional fill is being brought in to meet design elevations. Vision Park, of course, you know, phase one is complete. Phase two, the clay liner has been completed. The block wall installation is currently in progress. You can see that from Wellman Road. And the bridges have been approved for fabrication. Water and sewer, the wastewater treatment plant expansion, we have a notice to proceed that was given this month. And the Pinecroft Lift Station enforcement upgrades, those are scheduled to be completed the end of this month. On our PIT and ARP projects, the Shenandoah portion of the Tamina Water and Sewer Utilities, the construction is running from September until January of '24. And we've hit some milestones on the County ARPA project. The preliminary engineering is now at 90%. The geographic surveys at 80%. The historical and cultural assessment is 100% complete, and the environmental assessment is 90% complete. Everything else is still scheduled for the first quarter for some of the drainage projects.
That's it? That's it, all right. Thank you, Councilor Raymaker. Move on to item number eight, presentation of updates on IDC revisions.
Counsel, in just a few months, the city council will be considering changes and amendments to the Integrated Development Code, or as we call it, the IDC. Because the recommended changes will be substantial, we wanted to begin the reviewing process of changes that the Planning and Zoning Commission has already addressed in the past few months and bring these kind of one piece at a time to city council so that members of the public will have plenty of time to hear what those recommendations are and to make any comments. Tonight, I want to refresh everyone's memory on the recommendations that the Planning and Zoning Commission worked on a few months ago, and that part was the various zones that are in the city. The Planning and Zoning began its task by examining the 10 residential zoning districts that we currently have in the IDC. Some zones, such as manufactured homes, are required by law, and even though we don't have any in the city, the law requires that we provide a zone for manufactured homes. Others, such as multifamily, require multiple zones because multifamily may be apartments, may be townhouses, could be duplexes. After Planning and Zoning reviewed all 10 of the residential zones, it recommends three reductions. They are all single-family residential zones, the R-35, R-22, and R-10 zones. The R-35 zone, single-family residence, requires a house be built on a minimum of 35,000 square-foot lot, or eight tenths of an acre. The R-22 zone requires a minimum lot size of 22,000 square feet, or six tenths of an acre. And the R-10 zone requires a minimum lot size of 10,000 feet, or three tenths of an acre. First of all, Planning and Zoning looked at the probability of houses in the remaining part of Shenandoah being built on 35,000 square-foot lot or a 22,000 square-foot lot, and noted that it was fairly impractical and probably would not happen. But more important, the R-1 zone, where most houses are built, that require a minimum of 8,000 square-foot lot, when you compared the building setbacks, the front setbacks inside of the R-1 zone to the R-10, 22, and 35, they're virtually identical. So there's really no need. Someone could build a house on a 35,000 square-foot lot, and building setbacks and side setbacks would be virtually the same as the R-1 zone. And that's the reason for the recommendation that those three zones be eliminated. On the commercial side, the city has nine zones or districts. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends the elimination of the Sports Hospitality District and the C2, or the Planned Shopping Center District. The Sports Hospitality District has never been used since it was created in 2011. Likewise, the C2, the Planned Shopping Center District, has never been used. When we questioned developers about that, they pointed out that our Office Commercial District is virtually identical, except it allows, it's more flexible. And so developers looking at the two, Office Commercial versus the Planned Shopping Center District, find the Planned Shopping Center District not to be useful. And as a result of that, Planning and Zoning recommends the elimination of that district. The other two. The other two things Planning and Zoning looked at was the commercial 3 district, which has never been used. However, its characteristics are ideal for redevelopment. And so Planning and Zoning has recommended that we rezone the area that is currently Neighborhood Services along the I-45 frontage from our city hall where we're sitting today, going to Research Forest. So we're talking about including Dezen, La Quinta, Denny's, this stretch, be rezoned to C3. And Planning and Zoning has made some changes which will make it ideal for developers to redevelop the existing property. And I won't go through all of those changes tonight, except to say that we will have those listed. And then finally, and last, the Planning and Zoning Commission spent a considerable time looking at the pros and cons of the retail commercial zone. Over the years, it's gotten a lot of, do we need this, is it good, is it bad? Almost every piece of property in the residential commercial zone has been developed with one exception, and that is the corner of Research Forest and I-45. That 11-acre tract is about all that's left. Planning and Zoning believes that the RC zone, or res, retail commercial should remain as it is because we believe that piece of property is so valuable for sales tax revenue that we should keep that designation. So that is what Planning and Zoning, its recommendations as far as zoning is concerned. Again, we will have those summarized and put them on the city's website so that anyone can see these changes. And next month, I'll bring you a little more of what Planning and Zoning has done in the past, and then we will pretty much catch up to where we are working now, which is the area of when an SUP is really needed or not. And Planning and Zoning is, I think, is going to eliminate several things, for instance, in the Neighborhood Services Division, so that you would not need an SUP for a ice cream parlor, for example. But that's where we are, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
How much input have you had from citizens?
We have, we have been blessed with tremendous input from citizens. And just in the home occupation or business occupation, I believe we've had over 40 people speak over a period of seven months. Prior to that, when we were talking about the retail commercial zone and the redevelopment zone, we have talked with, I'm going to guess, five, six, seven developers, three of which have developed in the city. When we were talking about this redevelopment zone, the owner of the La Quinta spoke, and they gave their opinions, and the owner of Dezen, who would really like to redevelop, gave us his thoughts and opinions. So we've had a lot of input.
Good.
All right? Thank you.
Thanks, Bill, and thanks to PNZ to, you know, for all the hard work you guys are putting in.
I'm, I'm going to say this, they work hard on this.
Just one more, one more question before you go. All of these changes to the IDC apply only to properties within the city limits?
Correct. We do not have any control on anything outside of our city limits. Good, thank you.
And, I'm sorry, one more question, Bill. Almost got away. When do you think it's going to be available for publish?
I'm thinking February is going to be my best guess. It's, the reason I, I go, I think, is once in a while, we get a lot of community input and a lot of debate, and so we'll talk two or three months on the subject. But where, where we are today is, we really are down to, in reality, two chapters of the 20 chapters that are left. A lot of what I haven't talked about before, chapters 20 to 24 are dictated mostly by the legislature, and so when the legislature makes changes, we have to make those. So I still think we're on track for looking at February.
So I, I know that, that we're looking at some point of taking a group of chapters at a time, and having the opportunity to discuss those.
Yes.
Are we getting close to where you can start distributing the other 20 chapters that we're not working on, or that we're completing?
Yes.
So we can actually start reading through it and
Yes.
denoting questions and
And, and this one that I went through tonight will have a lot, but makes it a little harder because some of it are charts. But the, for instance, the home business is, what we have published, we intend to be the final draft, subject obviously to city council comment.
Thank you.
Great work. We're going to move to item number nine, discussion of possible action to adopt the following resolution. Resolution urging Governor Abbott to continue his efforts to curtail illegal infiltration at the Texas border. I'm going to read Resolution R-23-008, in part, therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Shenandoah that commends Governor Greg Abbott for his proactive approach and consistent efforts in dealing with the challenges presented by illegal crossings at the Texas border, urges Governor Abbott to continue these initiatives, recognizing the need for a robust and balanced approach that upholds the rule of law while ensuring the human rights and dignity of all individuals, encourages collaboration with federal agencies, neighboring states, and the Mexican government, emphasizing diplomatic and comprehensive solutions to address the root causes of mass migration, supports any measure that prioritizes the safety and well-being of Texas residents, ensuring that border communities remain secure and thrive both economically and socially. A copy of this resolution will be sent to Governor Greg Abbott, members of the legislature, and the Texas congressional delegation, as a testament to our support for steadfast action on this crucial issue. This resolution shall become effective and continue to remain in effect immediately upon its passage, approval, and adoption. Do we have a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Brott, seconded by Councilman Fletcher. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We're going to move to item number 10. Discussion of possible action to adopt the following resolution. A resolution standing with Israel as it defends itself against barbaric attacks launched by Hamas and other terrorists. Therefore be it resolved by the city council, I'm sorry, Resolution Number R-23009. Therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Shenandoah, that the city of Shenandoah hereby extends support to the people of Israel in this time of unprovoked aggression and stands in solidarity with the members of the Israeli population who choose to call Texas their home. The city of Shenandoah reaffirms Israel's right to self-defense and mourns the over 1,400 and increasing Israelis and 27 Americans killed and over 2,600 wounded in Hamas' unprovoked attack on Israel. Effective date, this resolution shall become effective upon signature by me, the mayor, or upon being effective without the mayor's signature. Do we have a motion on this? A motion to approve it?
Second.
A motion to approve by Councilman Pollard, seconded by Councilman Fletcher. Any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item number 11, discussion of possible action to approve a developer's agreement with Macowan Industrial Park LLC.
Yes, counsel, we have reached an agreement with Macowan Industrial Park LLC. They have agreed, they own six acres of land, which is near and just north of Oak Ridge High School. City's going, agreed to provide water and sewer to them, and they have agreed to annex into the city. And then there are other parts of the agreement which are set forth in there. We have agreed to reduce the building setback line on their east property line from 35 feet to 15 feet. It's staff recommendation that this agreement be approved, and I believe that we have a representative from Macowan in the audience tonight.
Do you wish to speak, sir?
No, sir.
All right. Do we have a motion on this matter?
Motion to approve the developer's agreement with the Macowan.
A motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker, seconded by Councilman Fletcher. Any discussion? How much money have we saved, Joseph?
Well, that won't be determined until we, we solicit, you know, sealed bids. But working with Macowan, they're, they need water and sewer, and there's a section of city line that they're connecting to that was in desperate need of replacement, is on our capital improvement plan to be done in the next three years from now. And they've agreed to pay half of that, that replacement cost to get this project moving forward.
So we'd be escalating that?
Yes. Right.
Significant savings for the city, and thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
What can Shenandoah?
Yes. Item 13, discussion of possible action to approve payment for a non-budgeted emergency expenditure over $15,000 to repair a water line break.
Quick background on this, our 16-inch water line there that comes from our elevated storage tank broke. It was, you know, some people probably noticed a decrease in water pressure. We were able to maintain above the minimum water pressure required by TCEQ while we affected that repair. The cost for the pair was over the city administrator's authority, so this is back before council for approval and ratification.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any discussion?
I did think that perhaps, I think we talked about it before, if maybe we should bump up the city administrator's authority up to maybe 20,000?
We'll have to bring that back for a second item.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not on the agenda for
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries. I skipped item number 12, let's discuss that. Discussion of possible action to adopt an investment policy.
Okay, I didn't know if you'd skip that because Lisa wasn't here. So this is an annual agenda item that comes up typically after budgets approved. So Lisa sat down with Hilltop Securities to look at our investment policy to make sure that we are still in compliance with the Government Financer Office Association, GFOA, as well as the Public Funds Investment Act, the PFIA. We are in compliance with that, and you'll find in the agenda packet a draft investment policy. For your view, this was reviewed by the investment committee, and they have approved this updated policy.
Thank you for saving me from having to say that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve by Councilman Brott, seconded by Councilman Raymaker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. All right, back on track, item number 14. Discussion of possible action regarding proposed holidays for 2024.
So you have a list of the proposed holidays before you in the agenda pack, and these are matching the holidays that the city observed last year. Any questions or change, welcome to discussion.
Thank you.
You know, other, other than perhaps next year that we not have a meeting so close to Christmas?
We'll, we'll, we'll adopt our meeting.
Yeah. We'll address our meetings.
I thought it was adopted at the last council meeting.
Right.
Yeah, I couldn't call in for that.
We assumed you would agree with us.
No.
Well, then it would have been four to one.
That's probably true.
Still the same age.
All right.
Go back to this agenda item.
You have to make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion to approve by Councilman McLeod, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Discussion, additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item number 15, discussion of possible action to ratify the accounts payable for September 2023.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Brott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I have questions, we can discuss.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question on Vision Park roundabout retention wall repairs, $3,800. What is that?
So we had a driver, instead of making the roundabout, decided to just go straight through it, and it damaged the retention wall where the large live oak is, and so it was a repair of that wall.
When that happens, is there any recourse that we have? Do we have cameras set up to where we can see who did that, so we can
We had a police report, so we've got a license plate, so we can go after their insurance.
I'd, I'd suggest that we go after it.
I think in this case, they did not have insurance. But I can check with Lisa, she, she was looking into that.
Was this the one where they were arrested?
Yes. So we make the repair, and then we, we seek that reimbursement from insurance after the fact.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 16, Civic Club updates.
Good evening again, mayor and council. I have a lot tonight. So as hopefully everybody knows, the Fall into Fun Festival is this Saturday evening, October 28th, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Shenandoah Main Park. We posted all over social media, both posts from cities, from Civic Club, as well as individuals sharing, so hopefully we've got the word out to everybody about the upcoming event, so that they can come participate in all the fun. And hopefully you've also seen some of the cool little video splashes that we've done to kind of help get people excited about that. Some of the things that we're going to have at the event, we'll have a hayride, that'll be running during that entire time. We'll have some oversized tricycle races that should be pretty entertaining to watch the folks do. We'll have bouncy houses and bouncy swings, face painting, a pumpkin decorating contest, I'll comment more on that in a second, some balloon artists, smores table, of course, music, and candy for the folks in attendance. For the pumpkin decorating, we invite the attendees to bring and submit their own decorated pumpkin in one of two categories. It can either be decorated because it's carved, or it can be decorated because it's painted or some other, you know, thing that's been attached to it or written or drawn on it. All pumpkins will need to be brought to the event by 6:30 p.m. They'll be displayed at the park pavilion. Any type of decorations can be used, obviously not anything adult-oriented, but paint, glitter, paper, cloth, your imagination, it's basically the, is the zero, as far as you want to go with it. All pumpkins will need to be removed at the end of the event. If left, unfortunately, your pumpkin will be disposed of in the trash for anything that's been left after 8:00 p.m., which is the end of the event. The size of the pumpkin The size of the pumpkin, type of pumpkin, or number of pumpkins is totally your choice. You can enter one pumpkin, multiple pumpkins, we're not really putting limits on, on any of that. Folks are welcome to wear costumes, including any council members that may be in attendance, but they are not required, so totally optional. Again, the event will be from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Parking will be at the pool, and then for all of our festival attendees that are there, we're going to have the train that'll get them over to the park, as we've done in past events from that. And then finally, I want to, at least on this topic, I'm sure you all have heard of Charlie's Angels, but tonight I want to call out a different type of angels, and that's our Avalon Oak Angels. We had to have a thousand packs of candy bagged up for this upcoming event, and so I'd like to actually, if it's okay, have them stand up for a minute and just recognize them for the hours that they put in. Because, you know, we, most of what we do in Civic Club can't be done without volunteers, and they did a ton of work to make sure that this was, this was well taken care of for our event. The, and then I just want to call up, the next event coming up is going to be Lighting of the Angels. That is November 28th, it's the first Tuesday after Thanksgiving. It'll be at the city municipal complex, as it usually is, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. This promises to be our best lighting of the angels yet. We'll have more activities, there's going to be a focus on opportunities to capture photo and video memories while you're here. We will be setting up the day before as we always do, so, that's Monday, November 27th. I believe we typically get going about 9:00 a.m., but we will post on social media when our start time is for anybody that would like to come and volunteer. This is not a, you don't have to come at 9:00 a.m. and work until, you know, dinnertime. If you can come for an hour, if you can come in your lunch break, you know, whatever you have available, even if you just come up to visit, there's, you know, there's the folks from the Civic Club and several residents that come up pretty much every year to help put things together, but all the extra hands that we can, can get are very helpful in this event, and that helps us get all of our wonderful decorations set up. So I'll, that's all I have. Any questions on any of that?
Great job, thank you. And I, I will say that with this event that's coming up, there was a lot of input from throughout the city on what to do. This replaces some events that we've had in the past. There have been complaints in the past from some citizens that we didn't listen and do what they asked for. We listened very carefully and put in a lot into this program, and I think anyone in the city that can possibly be free this weekend, please attend and see, because this is like an example of what the city can do and will do in the future. The mayor has dedicated a lot more money to the Civic Club to, to pump up our events, to make them even more beneficial to our residents, and this is really going to be a showplace. And this is, if you see, and if you like this, wait till you come to Lighting of the Angels, because there's going to be this on steroids. But thank you very much, and thank you, the Civic Club, outstanding work.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to the city council for approving that budget.
Thanks for recognizing that.
All right, city attorney updates?
None tonight.
City administrator updates?
I have just one. Last Saturday, we had trash bash, and I think it was one of our most attended that we've ever had. We had 168 cars.
Wow.
Passed through. We had, you know, we bring in four additional dumpsters, we have our existing 40-yard dumpster, and then we have another five yard. We've filled up every dumpster with, with trash, so that was a great service to provide, and it was very well received. Oh, and we also had, I wrote this down, 3,400 pounds of shred. So it was, it was well-used, and like we've done in the past, we make sure and check that they are residents, and they were all residents, so I think we should keep doing it.
Great event. Great event. Thank you. Council inquiries?
Well, as I alluded to, then I would hopefully like to see a future agenda item for increasing the city administrator's spending authority, a minimal amount, finance at C20.
I would agree with that on the agenda item.
It's a good idea.
I'm good.
I did want to bring up something. One of my neighbors contacted me a few weeks ago about a concern, we, in our little neighborhood, there was a house that we found out was abandoned, has been, the property was sold May 28th. Come to find out, so we sort of looked into it, and Stephanie has been monitoring it, had written citations and had worked on it, and within a week after bringing it up to her and showing more pictures, the grass was over a foot tall. It was, there was an abandoned truck on, in the driveway. Within, I went by this afternoon, for those of you that live in my neighborhood, it's all cleaned up, the citations were issued. The owners came back and cleaned it all up, and they took, today, the, the truck is out of the driveway, so it's finally starting to look like a, a better place. But I commend Stephanie Sadler for being all over that. She was well aware of it when I brought it to her attention, and as always, Jackie Thompson listens to the citizens and, and acts quickly, so hats off to Jackie and to the city administrator for making those things happen.
Thank you. Councilman Brown?
Good. Councilman McLeod? Yeah, just in case anybody hasn't mentioned it, there's a bunch of stuff on the, on the ballot today, and early voting's already started, so there's, of course, the CISD bond, and, you know, research that, make your decisions, look at all the data that's behind that, you can go to the bond site. But there's also a bunch of other resolutions that you need to really study. Some of those can have some pretty serious impact on your freedoms and freedoms of others, and some of those are about taking care of teachers. And so I'm just going to encourage you guys to, to really do your research, make your decisions, and then definitely, definitely get out and actually pull the lever, punch the ballots, and then cast your vote.
I just have one comment. I am concerned about the, the assertions that were made earlier today during the citizens' forum, and I, I want to make sure that we address this. We're going to address this offline with the residents of Tammany, because I'm really concerned about that, that opinion that was stated here tonight. I want to be, have the opportunity to defend the city on this, because I think that's wrong.
Very concerning.
It's very concerning that, that feeling is out there, because it's not real. We're going to move on to executive session. Executive session, according to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, as follows. Section 551.087 and 075 deliberating regarding economic development, drainage and detention, and 071 pending or contemplating, contemplated litigation. We're going to move on at 8:19. No action was taken. We are going to adjourn this council meeting at 9:11 p.m.